...under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please, Dr. King.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to gather today as we conduct the business of the city. Please be with us and protect our medical and caregiving community as they continue to bear the burden of the pandemic. Please be with our police, fire, and EMS and other first responders as they continue to be on the front lines during this trying time. Please guide our local leadership, our state leadership, and our national leadership as we grapple with the issues of justice inequality. Let our ears, minds, and hearts be open and let the message of hope and progress outweigh the barriers, those of barriers and hatred. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So if there are no corrections or additions to the minutes, they'll stand as approved. Do we have any corrections or additions?
Uh huh.
Okay, seeing that, so we'll go ahead and those of the minutes are, will stand as approved. So today is public comment, and I know that public comment has been by email or also by Zoom and so, or if there are people that would like to speak before the commission. Again, we have 30 minutes. We ask that you, no more than five minutes. And then again, make sure you announce your name and that we will go from there. So do we have anyone here for a public comment? See, Lynn, do we have anybody on the internet?
No.
Okay. Right, well, seeing that, we will go ahead and we'll move on to reports of the city manager.
There's an echo.
Six. Oh, I'm sorry. Consideration of petitions memorial and remonstrances.
Mayor Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from High Plains Public Radio to allow the mayor to proclaim June 27th, 2020 as High Plains Public Radio Day in Garden City.
I'll make the motion. We approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have anybody here from High Plains Public Radio today? Okay, then we'll say that, we'll maybe find a time to read that with them, so.
Item 7A, Mayor Commissioners, as a matter of information, the Wednesday, June 10th, the city received notice from the District Court of Fenton County, Kansas, that the city's motion for summary judgment was granted. The Wheatland Electric Cooperative inks motion for summary judgment was denied in case number 18 CB 72. I had been subsequently asked, there was something in the order of exact wording, I'm not sure of, but that court costs were, were assigned to Wheatland and that does, the inquiry was whether or not that was our attorney fees covered. That's not, that's the court costs, which are relatively nominal. And the inquiry of, of what we've spent to date on this case for outside counsel, probably a little over $450,000 without going back and looking back at all the invoices and assigning those to the different, different categories, to the best of our quick math, we would say that that can be tied directly to this case number 18 CB 72. The other items under managers' report are all staff reports, monthly staff reports. If you have any questions on those, the staff's available across the hall, as they will be the whole meeting, so we can have the right person come in and try to address any of those.
And I remember reading, I didn't know if they, in the Lee Richardson Zoo reported, they had a, after the 22nd, I know that we are looking at sometime after that opening, and I'm just curious about the opening of the new exhibits, and I don't remember if I read it in that, and if I did, I missed it.
Um, the, the information that my office has sent out was that the zoo would be included in those things that would open to the public on June 22nd pending a, pending an operations plan. And so I do think they've worked out some of the details, but I'm not familiar with them.
Chris, do you run the corner?
Come on up. Christie?
So the question reopening and then the idea about just how far before the new exhibits opened, I got a chance to tour them and they, it was really impressive, so.
Sure. Reopening is slated for June 22nd. A few of the buildings and habitats might, like MOA, the Marie Osprey Aviary might still be closed, but in general, the zoo will be open on the 22nd. Other changes might occur on the 6th, two weeks later, if we do it in a bit of a staged format. As far as the new habitats, we're still making progress. Right now, it looks like construction is gonna finish earlier than the end of July, but no promises on exactly when. And then we have some work to do after that, before it's ready for public.
I know a lot of people have missed the zoo and...
Sure.
The meetings of note, just would remind the commission that there's three weeks between this meeting and your next meeting, so that means we'll be scheduled for a town hall meeting. The intent is to have that here in the commission chambers and at 7:00 PM, unless, unless you'd like to discuss doing something different than that, we'll, we'll keep that as planned. We're also this week opening this building up. Today was the first one. There's a planning commission Thursday, and then kind of over time, we'll begin adding back some of the meetings that take place, take place in this building. I think with that, we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2509-2020A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2509-2020A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance where case law of the state of Kansas would prohibit the applicability of city ordinances to KSU's real property. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2866-2020. Carol? I guess Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you in person. This, this ordinance deals with the annexation, whenever the time comes, of a pre-annexation agreement with KSU. The agreement was that the city would extend water services out there. We've completed that. They're doing the testing right now, and then it'll probably be turned on within the next week or so. The agreement, this ordinance that we're asking you to pass, is that when KSU agreed to sign the pre-annexation agreement, that if their state statutes that govern all of their stuff for KSU, that the city's ordinances didn't supersede that and cause them difficulties. This is just saying that whenever that time may come, could be five years, 10 years, it's annexed, that, that this ordinance will be considered at that time. And be happy to answer any questions.
Codes and state laws that we're talking about, for example, there are state laws that are applicable to state property relative to building codes, and the state wants to adopt and accept and follow one building code for all state buildings. They don't want to go to each municipality and have to follow their building codes or life safety codes. They're very compatible, but what we have agreed to is that, that our ordinances, building code ordinances, for example, will not supersede state regulations and what the state follows. This is something that the city of Manhattan has done for many, many years, of course, with K-State right there. And K-State agreed in the MOU that they would agree to the annexation if we passed this ordinance at least 30 days prior to the annexation. So I worked through it with their council and I'm, it's acceptable to me.
Great. Any questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2866-2020.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let Deb second.
Commissioner Euler has seconded, so any, with that, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution authorizing temporary financing for the pool project and the east side drainage project. If approved, this would be resolution number 2851-2020. Melinda?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This resolution authorizes the issuance of temporary notes for the projects that you previously approved on May 19th, and that was for the pool project, and on June 2nd was the drainage project on, on the east side. This allows for the financing of those projects to take place so that they can get started. Mary Carson prepared the resolution to authorize a temporary financing. This is over a two-year period of time at a 1% interest rate.
Okay, that's...
When we go to final GO financing, the payments will be made out of the Fund 40 bond and interest fund on these two projects.
So do we have any questions on, on this one? With that, we'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution 2851-2020.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from I-1, I-2 Light Medium Industrial County to C-2 General Commercial District City for the property generally located west of 1603 West Mary and east of Ray Road in Garden City, Kansas. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2867-2020.
Hi, Carol.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Nice to see you in person. Without a screen. So we have, this is a half acre piece of parcel that is located directly west of an existing restaurant, right there on Mary Street. I believe most of you are familiar with the location. The applicant just recently annexed this into the city back in April, and now they're going through the rezoning process. The idea is to match the zoning of the restaurant, which is C-2, and the reason that they, they split this up either for future development or to expand their parking lot, their business does well. And this was recommended for approval by the planning commission, and staff does recommend approval as well. If you have any questions, I can have the answer.
Yeah, I thought the planning commission did a really good job of discussing this. Does anyone have any questions?
I make a motion. We approve ordinance 2867-2020.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments to the Garden City zoning regulations, Article 20 PUD, planned unit development. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2868-2020. Carol?
I thought you were gonna read all those numbers.
Nope. That would be very complicated.
All of those sections refer to the planned unit development article in the zoning regulations. This amendment today is to amend the entire article, basically. The applicant, Jared Torres, he is developing a subdivision called Sunflower Crossing. It's on Spruce Street, just east of the bypass, west of the new Southeast Park. And he, he started the process of, of creating a PUD in this location. And to understand PUDs, they are, the way they work in Garden City is if you have a zoning district, for example, R1, which is the zoning district, and you want a PUD, it attaches with it. So you, you have to basically obey both the R1 and the PUD regulations. Well, he wanted to do the PUD regulations so that he could reduce the size of the lots to get in some more houses to make it a little bit more affordable. And he realized that there were a couple issues, one with setbacks and one with parking. And so he came to us requesting a change. His request for the change to parking, or let me start with the setbacks. His request to change for the setbacks, basically the way it works is the reg, the setback regulations that's in the underlying district will be the setback, however, the applicant can request a variation. And so that is what the proposal is for the change, is to allow the developer to request a variation in the, in the size of the setbacks. As far as off-street parkings, typically in residential districts, we require four hours, four off-street parking spaces. His request is to reduce it down to two when the widths of the lots are 50 feet or less, which, which would accommodate probably a smaller house, which would mean less parking required. Staff did go through all of the regulations, the PUD regulations, and found that there was a lot of things that were a little confusing, and so we kind of brought some clarity to things, made some specific steps so that developers would be able to understand the process a little bit easier, and staff would be able to administer it really a little bit easier. There's not really any other policy changes, it's just, just the way, we just have it, the steps lined out a little bit more clear. I will say that if someone is proposing to, to make a variation to the setbacks and they want to reduce it to, you know, zero feet or something like that, and this commission doesn't feel good about that, there is a chance, the development plan will come before you for every PUD, so you will have that option to, to approve or disapprove on what they're requesting. This was presented to the planning commission. They did not have any problems, and they did recommend approval. If you have any other questions on any of the other changes, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission?
Did it mention anything about streets? Is it just pertaining to the lot sizes and not, not right of way and easements?
Then, yeah, correct.
So the streets are still the standard sized streets? That doesn't change at all? Because I know in some areas, the streets are a little bit narrow, and so when you have parking on both sides, it's really hard to get traffic down, so.
That's true. That's true.
So then the setback? Okay.
It doesn't have anything to do with the streets, it's just the lots themselves.
I make a motion. We approve ordinance 2868-2020.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Commissioners, we'll start this item. We do have a scheduled presentation at 1:30 that isn't necessarily a public hearing, so we could delay that a little bit if we needed to. If it looks like we're gonna go way past, then we may stop and start. Item 10, I'm sorry, 11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the selection of an electric service provider for newly annexed property. Mike?
There he comes. He just heard his name, so. We are still practicing social distance, or physical distancing, so, thank you, Mike.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. The, what this is, is a continuation of the previous two commission meetings we've had regarding the selection of electric service for the annexed property known as Sunset Estates. I'm gonna just read this little portion here. I'm not, we're not gonna go through, I'm not gonna go through all of the documents unless you prefer it. At the last meeting, it was determined that Mr. McVeigh or Mr. Miller will answer questions that was directed to Wheatland. Then I have some answers to some questions that was directed to the city. And then that would be pretty much it, unless you have questions or Randy has something to say about that. So just to back up here a little bit, the governing body at its May 29th, 2020 meeting, received information from both Jim McVeigh, Wheaton Electric Cooperative Incorporated, and myself, Public Utilities Director for the city of Garden City, regarding the selection of an electric service provider for annexed properties. This discussion continued from the April 21st meeting, 2020, as the governing body was to consider selecting the electric provider for those two annexed properties. Wheaton Electric Cooperative at that time had notified the city on April 8th, 2020. They were not interested in requesting or negotiating with the city and obtaining a franchise agreement to serve the two properties. However, after the city provided its opinion on the factors, the 11 factors that's laid out in state statute, in the, in that we presented those in the city commission agenda packet information, and it stated under the rates of various suppliers that, as directed by KSA 66-1,176, there would be eight and a half percent of gross revenues of total retail sales attributed to new customers in this area added to the utility bill for 10 years. This eight and a half percent gross revenues would be paid to Wheaton Electric Cooperative for background compensation. Wheaton Electric notified the city that they would, at that time now, wanted to request to be considered for a franchise to serve the two properties. At that time, the city suggested you not take any action, and we give an additional 15 days for Wheaton Electric to submit any additional information, which they did, and which the city did. And then at the governing body's meeting on May 5th, there again, that, we presented that information, and then we were asked to come back with this follow-up information, which we'll present today. And I'll, actually, I'll just turn it over to either Bruce or Jim, and you can answer the questions that, the information you have, and then I'll answer the ones after that.
Thank you. It's nice to see you in person, so.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Good, good.
Greatly, greatly appreciate your time and the opportunity to make a presentation here, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Again, my name is Jim McVeigh, second time we've come before you on this issue, and I want to make it clear that the only annexation, the franchise request that we are making is for 2852, as we made clear last time, that's a Sunset Tariffs only. Earlier, we presented information, and after that presentation, you all had some questions. I think Mike were actually ones who raised them, when he wanted to know what the five year ECA PCA was on the average, thinking that that may make a difference on the, on the bills going forward. He also pointed out, if you remember, in the Wheaton's residential tariff, he showed that the service availability charge was going up for three years. And I pointed out to you that in our tariff, it's revenue neutral, however, because we lowered our energy charge, and I was pointing out to you that each year, the energy charge was going down. For example, in phase one, this year is .03704. At the end of the three years, it was gonna be, the energy charge was down to .096, for example. And so I know Mike wanted an opportunity to run those numbers to make sure that, in fact, it was revenue neutral, that the, the price, our, our rates were not going up. And I think that's been made clear by our calculations, and I believe, Mike, you're not disputing that it's, that the rates, you want me to still talk about that?
No, that, you certainly can't talk. Jim, I was just gonna bring up my, at the end, I was gonna show my comparison of today's rates, so.
All right.
However, that works for you.
Yeah, I'll, then I'll just touch upon it then, just to make sure, at least let you know what to look at for the evidence, when it shows what the three years, because I did a, another document that shows what those three years are under the different scenarios, a 500 kilowatt hour house, 750 kilowatt hour house, 1,000 kilowatt hour house, and a 1,500 kilowatt hour house. So with that, I'd like to start with, and it's, on the PDF that I got, and I actually started on page 258 of that PDF, is the five-year average showing the negative PCA and ECA. What that means, and just so everybody understands, and you probably do, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but what, what that means is, is a lot of times, the power bill is, is the biggest charge of what somebody sees in the mail, and not the distribution part of it that we do. And so the KCC allows for an ECA PCA as that power bill may potentially go up or potentially go down. What Wheaton does is, when it's negative number, it's, it's a credit, it's subtracted from the bill, and basically that makes the rates lower. And the, as you see before you, is that five-year average attached to this, right before, that, in that PDF, attached to this document, is the actual data itself, in case you all wanted to do the math, I'm sure you don't, but that's what these averages were, and in fact, basically for the five last years, we've had a negative PCA. So we have been giving credit on our bills, showing, which basically means a lower bill for four of the last five years. And in fact, that continues even to last month, as you saw, that we presented to you, but it actually continued even into this month. And so because of that, we went ahead and did a calculation of the rates again. We showed you last month what they were for April and then for May billing. We're gonna show you what the ECA PCA is for May with the, with the June bills. And again, I'm gonna even just use Garden City's numbers, because as I did last week, I wanted, last month, I wanted to, I'm sorry. I wanted to compare not just the, the bill itself, but what the two rates from the two providers would be, even without the franchise fee or without the eight and a half percent compensation after annexation. And even just subtracting those out, even just in a head-to-head competition, you look at it, and frankly, again, Wheaton's bills are lower. For the 500 kilowatt hour house, it's, Garden City's would be 7633. Wheaton's, when you subtract out the franchise fee, was $72.74. So each one of those actually is lower. When you get to even a 750 megawatt house, coming, sorry, kilowatt house, Wheaton's bills, about $7 lower per month for that person. And because our, again, our usage number goes down, the larger the number of kilowatts, actually the cheaper our, our rates are, our average house, I'm sure, is very much like you're somewhere under 900 kilowatts per month. Just assuming, and basically, that's where the delta's crossed. Obviously, the less you use, under our higher service availability number, your rates go down really as you use more kilowatt. And that's why, if you look at the, under the, even using Garden City's numbers, the 1,000 kilowatt hour house, if you subtract out the franchise fee and just go head-to-head on what the, the price of electricity is, Garden City's is 13267. If you subtract out the franchise fee and just go head-to-head, Wheaton's is $122.44, almost 10 bucks a month for that house, just one month. However, as you know, last week, last month, I keep saying last week, pardon me, last month, I had a different graph for you, and it's on page 265 of your PDF. It has in it the PCA for this month, which is a little different number, it's .008060, as it'll show up on your, your document. Again, this, I think, is actually a more telling and more revealing graph, because it, it does say, what's gonna happen if you don't grant a franchise, and what's gonna happen if you do grant a franchise, and compares those numbers. Because that's the, that's the real question you're gonna be asked here today. And if you look at that, and again, this is just kind of the average ECA that we've been giving, this .008. When you look at that over time, for even the 500 kilowatt hour house, it's three bucks for that house, you go down to the bottom where somebody's got a 1,500 kilowatt hour house, and we're talking about almost $30 a month that that house would save if Wheaton is allowed to serve for the next 10 years. I know that there's also some additional questions that you all have about, well, what's the developer gonna be charged? And you had some questions about that, and I, actually, what I did is make it simple. I don't have to stand here and go over it with you. I, I sent the tariff in as part of your documents, the tariff should be, it's on page 259, it's our public streetlight tariff, but the, the highlights are, we do charge a flat fee. The flat fee of it, as you can see, is right there, that includes the maintenance. In addition, Wheaton actually, because of that flat fee, we, after extrapolating that over time, we're allowed, under that flat fee, not only do that, but we are giving them the pole and 150 feet of, of conductor with, with each one for, that we're allowed to do under this flat fee arrangement. And then, and so I think if you, even if you look at the most expensive of those, this uses a steel pole, 1834 a month, and you add the most expensive light, you add the free conductor and pole, the, the bottom line is, is that it's, in just one pole, it's less expensive for that flat fee than just one household at 1,000 meter, at 1,000 kilowatts, using Wheaton's rates. So yeah, we charge a flat fee, Garden City does it, but when you look at the actual, what it's gonna cost to the individual, just one house, Wheaton is, Wheaton does better. Now, I don't know how many houses per pole are gonna be out there, but I guarantee it's not one for one. The other thing, point I'd, I'd like to make on that issue is, let's be, let's be frank, none of this is free. Somebody's paying for it. And so while they, they may, they give that away, that's true, that may be, but again, it's just coming out of some other tax, some other services you're provided. And so I think that this, this way is really upfront, because it's the cost causer under utility law, the basic concept of utility law, a cost causer. utility law, the basic concept of utility law, a cost causer, the user and pays, and so we think this is a, always been a very fair way to do it, do a flat fee over a period of time, it really is a very reasonable rate. The other question you all had was, is what do we do for underground facilities? We are a little different in that we do charge the developer upfront, unlike Garden City, again, even though it's not free, the truth is, but we don't, we do charge the developer upfront, but as they're built out, we reimburse that developer. So it ends up, if it's built out and successful development, ends up being a wash for us and Garden City in comparison.
Do you have an example of that, where that's happened?
All I can tell you is what's our tariff is, and I think there's a, we're serving a development just to the south of this location.
Well, that's happened, that's happened through our service territory, is we, is a developer has a 100 plat service, or 100 plat subdivision homes, once it's built out, as it's being built out, he's getting a refund each year. And once it's built out 100%, he's got his money back, or she.
The, the other thing I wanted to answer is if you look at, again, the last thing I want to address was the, the three years for the exhibits that, at page 265 of the PDF. I do a formula for the, for 2020, 2021, and 2022. If you look under the, the 750 kilowatt hour house and the 1,000 kilowatt hour house, that's where our delta crosses, when our average house is. And if you notice for the 1,000 watt kilowatt hour house, since they're using a little more kilowatts, their actually charge goes down a buck over three years. But if you look at the house that's, that's a little under the average we have, it goes up about a buck over three years. But to Wheatland, it's revenue neutral, you can't be completely revenue neutral per customer, but as far as revenue for the tariff, this is revenue neutral tariff. And, and I just wanted to point out how, if you wanted to, you can confirm that that three-year, if you will, service availability charge is not an actual increase in rates, that demonstrates it for you. Do you have any other questions?
So I have a question on that, just to make sure I'm understanding. So on this, on the tariff, the three-year analysis, did you use an average of the ECA PCA five-year average? Is that what you used, just going across those three years?
Mayor, we did not. We used the actual for this month's billing, that's what it says, as of May of 2020, just like we did last month. Now, we could do the math on that, it, the numbers would be different and just use what the average is, but we, what we did is use the actual billing that we had for the past two months that we were involved in this.
So is that that .004014? I'm just to make sure I'm on the right.
The, the, that's for April, I think, if you look at the, I think it shows.
Is this what you're talking about?
Well, that, I was wondering if you were using that, where you plugged in these numbers on this one that says electric cost after annexation as of April 2020. I'm sorry, I just pulled up the document, I didn't pull up the.
You have a, as of May of 2020, that shows this month's billing for Wheatland, and that actual power cost adjustment is different, it's .008060.
That's this.
And that is for this month, and that's on page 265 of your PDF.
Yeah. Oops. No.
There you go.
Oh.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, okay.
Mr. Mayor, that answered your question, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was looking, I was looking at this in document.
No problem. I want to make sure everybody knows how to get to this evidence when you need to make that decision, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Jim, just for clarification, is this number, I'm using my hand, if you can, my mouse, is this number just these five numbers divided by five?
If I understand correctly, it is the number of months divided, in other words, she didn't just take that five months and give it the same weighted average as the other four.
Right, so it's not a five-year using four summers and five winters.
Right, because it's staying this year, yeah. It's just up to management.
It's the average for 2020 and the average for the other four.
Okay.
Well, yeah, well, that's what I was asking, because if it's, if it's averaging so far at 2020, and that's essentially two winter months and three spring months, and then you're counting that as what a yearly rate is, and then dividing like that, that's really an apples and apples rate. But just wanted to under, I mean, you got it, you got to figure it somewhere, I just wanted to know how you figured it, because I can't see the formula behind it. I was curious.
If you, if you want any more information on this, we'll be glad to do it.
I think it corresponds, I could probably figure, I could probably go through it, because this is what I thought you were talking about earlier. Doesn't it, doesn't all that basically align with this?
Correct. That's the data.
Yeah, that's okay.
Gotcha. So this appears to me to be these, well, except it's been updated, I think you got last month's in, but maybe not. This is, this is the five-year average of these, this is the average of these months?
Yes.
Correct. So that one's actually higher than what's.
So this.
Is the average of those 12.
This plus, yeah, so this is getting treated as a 12-month average.
Um, that, oh, I see, I understand your question. That I don't know. That I'd have to go do the math. I didn't ask that question.
I mean, you got, yeah, nothing, fault you for it, just figure it some way, and I would imagine it costs more to purchase power in the summer than it does to purchase power.
That, again, I can't answer that question, we can, I could do the math for you if you guys want to give me a couple of days.
It's divided straight across. So the rate for 2020 is rate, is the same weight as 2019, 1870.
Actually, if you look at it, the summer months last year were, yeah, about the same. They wouldn't be far away. 2019, summer.
Are there any questions? Any further questions? Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The, I'll answer the follow-up questions that we were.
What, how much time do you estimate, Becky, Mike?
Less than 10 minutes, I think, unless there's lots of questions, but.
Teresa, now you guys scheduled the time, are you okay? Yeah, if you're mindful with.
I'll keep it short.
All right. They're fine, take whatever time you need.
At the last meeting, Mr. Rick, Mr. McVeigh brought up, I'd said that the extend, to extend city facilities to this property was minimal or something to that effect, he wanted to know the number. I've calculated that to be $10,920. 950 feet of that extension is actually what we would be extending to serve the subdivision. The remaining $5,396, I'm sorry, the remaining $5,524 was the invoices or the proposal that we received from Wheatland Electric on, this was going to cost to buy out their facilities and pay for the two times one-year lost revenue for that one pump jack that's there. And that's according to state statute that we pay that. So that's where that $10,000 comes from. The same thing on the streetlight installation and ongoing maintenance cost, Jim is correct, we don't charge an ongoing maintenance charge to the developer or homeowners association, whatever it may be. We do charge the developer upfront, $1,705.56, that was the latest purchase of the actual pole, galvanized steel pole and a luminaire that would go in for that subdivision. And then the rates, talking about the rates, what I did was, I just run a comparison of Garden City's rates today versus Wheatland Electric rates today. If Garden City was to serve that under 500 kilowatt hours, and it's the last one, Matt, on that list, should be Garden City's final, I think, I have a title, something like that. A couple of things I want to say on the rates. One is, the, if Wheatland Electric is given a franchise, there will be a 5% franchise fee charged to them, assuming that's what you assess, same as you do for any other utility, gas company, COCs, communications, et cetera. So there will, if they're serving that piece of property inside the city, it will require a franchise and it will require that fee to be attached to it. Garden City's charges as of today are just what it is, the rate, kilowatt hour charge and the taxes, period. And you can look at that, it's really close, we're 7633, they're at 7629 for 500 kilowatt hours. 750, they're $102.35, we're 104. 1,000 kilowatt hours, they're at 1,282, and that's a, looks like a typo on our part, it says 100, no, that'd be right, 132, so $6 difference, whatever that case may be. One thing about the ECA that the city does not have, we don't have an ECA, we haven't had an ECA since 2013, none of our wholesale power providers require an ECA. We have, we have contractual agreements on what we're going to pay for electricity, and I can't speak for Wheatland, but I don't know that they have that. If they did, they wouldn't have an ECA in there to adjust that power supply cost up and down. And then to go out any farther than what our current rates are today, I actually think that would be, I mean, we have no idea what the power cost is going to be in two years, three years, five years, or 10 years, so that's why I just did mine for today's rates.
So I have a couple of questions. So do, does Wheatlands, however you want to answer this, Mike, or however you want Wheatlands to answer. So does Wheatland serve any other businesses or residential places within the city limits?
No, they do not. Two years ago, both, Wheatland used to serve some facilities in the city and the city used to serve facilities outside the city. The KCC mandated that that be cleared up and none of that happens anymore, so no, they do not serve anybody in the city, and at the present time, we don't serve anybody outside the city.
That's okay, that was my other question. So then we don't serve anyone with outside the city limits, that's all Wheatland's?
True.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that.
Correct.
So when, when we annex this, this would actually be inside the city limits? And so going, basically, we, with the KCC, I don't understand if that's the situation where the KCC said.
Sure. The way this would work, Mayor, is that property has been annexed into the city, so it is in the city limits.
Okay.
You have a choice as to who's going to be the electric provider for that property. If you choose that it's going to be the city, then we'll carry on just like we always have before. The difference is that the state statute says that for any new property, that is, any new electrical consumption in this area or any area that we annex that used to be in Wheatland's service territory, we have to provide, we have to pay Wheatland Electric eight and a half percent of the total gross revenues for a period of 10 years for anything that's built there. So if this was one, say it was a Walmart instead of just one business that got built there, then we would pay eight and a half percent, whatever that gross is of that Walmart store, and every year, we'd have to send that total to Wheatland. How that is collected and paid to Wheatland has not been determined yet by the city commission. We haven't brought anything forward to you to determine how that's going to get paid, because as of today, nothing has been built in that territory, so there's nothing to assess the charges to. If you agree to give Wheatland the franchise that they're requesting, then they will, you know, if you agree to give it to them, there'll be a franchise fee that would be paid. And if it's 5%, like it is for other utilities, then 5% of those gross revenues will be paid back to the city for a franchise fee, and that franchise fee is for the use and operation of city right-of-way streets, alleyways, ease months, et cetera.
Well, so I'm curious, so would, so this is to Wheatlands, would you, would you be charging that back to your customers, that 5% fee that you would have to pay the city, or how would you absorb that cost?
That, that is actually paid by the customer, just like, is like the eight and a half percent is what we know. The reason, reason we're here is, again, there's our rates, but.
Could you come up to the mic so everybody can hear you? I know we can hear you, but the TV audience.
No, no problem.
Thanks.
Just to make sure I understand the question, is that what happens, where do we get the 5% franchise fee? That is paid by the customer, just like the eight and a half percent is going to be paid.
Mike, I have a question. It was represented last week that, that the, this wasn't necessarily apples to apples, because there's a franchise fee shown for Wheatland and not one for the city utility, but that's actually, that, that's not accurate. We pay, all of our internal utilities pay the same franchise fee as the gas company or the phone company or any other, any other private utility that does business inside the city limits. We assess that, we do it differently, we do it budgetarily, but it's part of, it's part of the customer charge.
Yeah, it is, that's right.
So this, well, at face value, you could say, look at this and say, well, this isn't apples to apples, because here's, like on this one, here's $3.55 that you could subtract off of that to make that gap even wider, when in fact, that's not true. You'd have to have, you have to have it in to make it apples and apples, because that internal franchise fee is being paid to the city general fund.
We do pay that franchise fee to the general fund, that is absolutely correct, and that franchise fee is weighted into our.
Customer charge.
Or our kilowatt hour charge.
Right.
Customer charge. So if, yeah, you're, you're right, that's, that's correct. So Wheatland would either, my view would either they would have a franchise fee separate, that $3.55, or they would include that, or they would say that's included in their customer charge, which they're saying it's not, by their.
Yeah, it'd be a separate line item.
That house, $3.55.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I do think that the, I mean, there was two things that were addressed last year to make this, and it's hard when you got two different utilities that charge to do different ways, but both Wheatland, I believe our staff have represented in this, in this layout, about as apples to apples as you get. You can take into consideration whether the eight and a half percent is appropriate to include in the math, but let's say you're looking at year 11, or you're taking out of the equation the eight and a half percent, to include it, to include it or to subtract the equivalent amount from the, the 500, 750, or 1,000 would be the way you would do it. So in this one, it wasn't taken out of the right-hand side, which is the Wheatland column, because if we would have done that, we would have had to like arbitrarily made a negative 5% calculation on ours or probably our customer charge to make that, to make that look the same, or to make that be the same, be the equivalent.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions from either Wheatlands or Dr. McVeigh? So I just want to make sure I understand this, I just want to be really clear about this. So I, so right now, nothing inside the city limits is served by Wheatlands. And so you're asking us to break a protocol, to have you become the service provider, or?
No.
I'm just trying to figure out what that's all about.
It's, this, this procedure is statutorily required.
Okay, I see.
Because the property annexed into the city was in Wheatland's service territory, and state law says that when that happens.
That this is a process.
That we have to go through this process. And so it's correct that at the present time, as far as we know, there are no properties served in the city by Wheatland and the other way around as well. We cleaned that up within the last.
We think so.
Year or so, yes. There were 80-some, I think, properties, houses and that kind of thing, pumps, that we had to clean up with the KCC and with the two parties. So I think you're incorrect, Mayor, although I can see where you're coming from.
Right.
They are, they're doing what the statute allows them to do, and we're doing what we're required to do.
Okay.
And the franchise is, is, again, is a contractual relationship that we would have between Wheatland and the city as to, the franchise number can be any number, our, we serve 40 franchise cities. We have very few that get 5%. The average franchise is 3.75, if you average all of them together. And so it's a contractual relationship that we have with, with each one of those cities to get a franchise fee and we serve.
Randy, thank you for clarifying. As, again, I was trying to figure all that out, and when I was reading through, there's lots of documents here to try that, so I appreciate that.
And it is a little different with Garden City, that we have a municipal.
Right, that's.
Electric utility, there are other cities that do not, and there may be two cooperatives, let's say, that want to serve that same territory that's been annexed, and therefore, those municipalities go through this process and determine which cooperative serves that annexed property. A little different in Garden City as some other cities do. Is that a fair comment?
Randy, would it be appropriate to review kind of process then, and then, I would like just to mention the factors, or have you mentioned the factors again?
Yeah.
And that way, if there's any other information that the commission desires from either city staff or Wheatland staff, that we're both here to hear that live and we're both here to ask the commission questions for clarity.
Yes. What we have determined the process to be at this point.
What we have determined the process to be at this point is that, uh, the governing body will take this matter under advisement. Uh, we believe that, that all evidence has been presented at this point by the city and by Wheatland. Uh, we believe that there's a requirement that, uh, staff, and basically, that would be legal staff for the city, prepare, propose findings and conclusions with a possible recommended decision. Uh, the decision is up to you. And what we intend to do are, are set, set out the evidence presented by each side for each one of the factors, the eleven factors set out in the statute, and then allow you to make a decision at a later date, probably the meeting of, uh, July twenty-first. You could decide at that meeting that you need additional information on one or more of the factors, and, and we can do that. And, and each one of the factors are weighed separately, and you can give them the weight that you desire. Uh, we don't know that any one of them is more important than any other. And you can also consider other factors that you think are important when making the determination. So, you're not limited to the eleven, you could throw in others as well. So, we will be coming back to you with, uh, proposed findings and, and conclusions, and at some point, then, we will draft an order after you make your decision, which we believe is, is required by the statute as well. So, you have a written finding, you have a written order, a written resolution, something that you can have in the record, because the record is important in case one of the parties, it wouldn't be us, but one of the parties would decide to appeal, which they have that right under state statute.
Mr. McVeigh, thank you. Bruce, thank you. Anything else that you wanna say?
Just, just one question. When, when are you, when are you gonna submit that, are you gonna serve us a copy of that?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And, uh, can you give us an opportunity to respond if we want?
I don't know that that's, that's set out in the, in the process, but we, I think we'll, we'll discuss that with our, with, uh, our council and decide if that's something we wanna allow. I think we probably have got to the point where all evidence is presented, and it might be that if, if we have the findings and the conclusions, and we'll, we would give those to you before the meeting. If you see something that you wanna comment on, I don't think the governing body's going to deny you the opportunity to come in and, and discuss it with them.
That'd be fair, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, uh, ready for Teresa and Kristen to present the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I'll get it started here, and let you have my seat, Kristen.
Going word-for-word, right?
See, Teresa, Teresa, I'm, I'm still in my seat. Ray, you've been listening. Do we need another mic for you? Kristen? Oh, you can hear, you can use it, yeah.
I'm not the podium, I'm for the process. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Teresa Dazenbrock, I think I'm familiar with most, we're gonna be meeting with, uh, one or two of you here yet, later. Kristen Sekovic, run through this, feel free to interrupt, ask questions as we go, or contact us later, whichever you're most comfortable with. Starting out with some of the highlights, you have the bound audit report, the, the city's CAFER that's been provided to you. If you get an opportunity, I encourage you to look at the transmittal and the MD&amp;A Management Discussion and Analysis. It's really a good executive summary of the whole document, and there's a lot of information in there, so you might prefer the summary. Encourage you, if you get a chance to, the notes to the financial statements are always a good document to review because they're gonna give you the framework on how the city's financial statements are put together, and how those are developed. And, and then, the last section in the CAFER is the statistical section. It starts on page one forty-three, it's a section of its own, but, um, there's ten years of historical data in there, and some of it, especially as you're dealing here right now with the budget and debt issues and stuff, is some really good comparative information that you may find beneficial in, in your decision-making processes, so. But the audit itself, uh, page one has the auditor's report, the start of it. It is an unmodified report on the primary government. The financials do include the two component units of the city, which is the Garden City Recreation Commission, that were audited in a separate audit and included here, and then also the Garden City Housing Authority, which was included here, so. No material statutory violations or problems were noted in the audit, so we commend the finance office and all of the city staff in that process, so. The government-wide financial statements then themselves start on page twenty-one through twenty-three, and in those, you'll find total assets and what they call deferred outflows of all the city's funds. This year were just under two-hundred-and-eighty-seven million dollars. That was up twenty-one million from last year. If you netted out of that, out of those total assets, the liabilities and deferred inflows, we had a five-point-nine-million-dollar increase, so, very good. Total revenue across all the city funds were just over eighty-two million this year. Uh, that was up about three-and-a-quarter million from the prior year, so. And then, the general fund, because so many of your departments operate within the general fund, um, on the budgetary basis, that fund balance increased a little over one-point-six million this year. It was up to just over seven million, so. Now, one area you don't see on a routine basis in the reports you get through management here is your debt outstanding at the end of the year. That's summarized in the notes on page seventy of the financial statements. The general obligation bonds for the governmental activities of the city were about twenty-six-point-nine million outstanding at the end of twenty-nineteen. Um, that's actually down nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, even though you issued in that category about one-point-four-two million in bonds last year, so. Now, the general obligation bonds for the utility funds were just over thirty-two million at the end of the year. That was actually up thirteen-point-six million, um, but really kind of down when you consider that you issued sixteen-point-one million in debt for that fund, so. So, the net, yeah. Now, between those two, those are your general obligation bonds in total. A lot of that debt, especially, basically, all of it that's in the utility funds, and even some of it that's in the governmental activities up there in that first line, um, some of that includes TIV financing and stuff. Not all of that is subject to your legal debt margin, um, using the attorney's calculations for that. The debt that's subject to the legal debt margin was actually a total of eighteen, about eighteen-point-four million. So, your debt margin, you were at twenty-four-and-a-half percent at the end of nineteen, um, leaving you with almost fifty-seven million in room, so seventy-five-and-a-half percent of your margin was still available, so. I know you've got some issues that you're dealing with now on those, so that kind of gives you an idea where you're at with them. The limited obligation bonds on, on the schedule there, three-point-two million, that's the city's proportional share of the star revenue bonds. It's a non-appropriation bond, it's paid through the incremental sales tax money that will come in on that, but under the accounting standards, you are required to reflect your share of that debt on, on the financials, so. And then finally, the capital leases, uh, almost fifty-six million there, uh, was down about one-point-eight million. The issues that added to it in twenty-nineteen were fairly minimal, less than three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for the normal equipment purchases throughout the city last year. The largest portion of those leases deal with the electrical utilities, with the Jamison and Dogwood leases with KMEA.
So, Teresa, I have a question. So, I know that, um, part of what, on the sales tax initiative, is part of, we'll be purchasing, you know, equipment and everything for the new fire station. Will this appear in here, or because it's purchased with sales tax reimbursements, will that, where will that come up?
Are those purchases that are through the new, uh, the joint Finney...
Right.
...Garden City?
Will they be listed in here? I was, I, I never...
They probably, are they gonna be capital leases? No, they'll be outright purchases.
Purchases, okay, that's...
So, so you would have, your share of the debt may show up...
Okay.
...as debt, uh, rather than capital leases, but, and then it would be paid as those sales tax revenues come in. It, it's effectively pledged revenue.
Good.
Little more information on your enterprise funds, um, the three major ones, the electric, water and sewer, and the airport. Current assets in the electric department were up sixty-five percent, bringing the total assets in that fund to a hundred-and-twelve million, um, which includes four-point-nine million in reserves. Water and sewer, uh, total assets ended at just over forty-two million this year. It was up a minimal amount, not quite a percentage, but still that fund had five-point-eight million in reserves, so. And, and the airport, uh, total assets for the airport, although current assets were down a little in total, you were just under thirty million in that fund. Your net position in the electric fund was up to thirty-seven-point-eight million, so up not quite five percent. Water and sewer, uh, net position was twenty-eight-point-four million at the end of the year, so a little bit, almost a nine percent increase there. The airport was down a little bit, uh, but still maintained net position at twenty-seven-and-a-half million dollars, so. The operating revenues, although electric was down, it still had total operating revenues of almost thirty-two million in that fund. Water and sewer was up six-point-seven percent, which equates to six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. So, its total operating revenues for twenty-nineteen were ten-point-four million. And, and then the airport, um, the assets are what makes the airport the major, one of the major funds. Revenue-wise, it's not, not so big, um, three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand in operating revenues for the airport. And then the investments in, in property, as you can see, are always rather large for most of them. Taking a look, then, at, at some of this information from your general fund, just comparing the revenues in the fund this year as a percentage, of course, taxes are always the high part, and we're gonna break that down here in a minute, but, um, for the most part, percentage-wise, they're really, the changes weren't significant anywhere. A little bit of increase in the transfer area, which is the ugly mustard color. Police and municipal court, Kristen's point is the black, uh, was down a little bit, or percentage or something, but. The taxes, then, though, the, the breakdown on it, um, since it's so large, you can see here, sales tax is what makes up the majority of that. And this year, it was a little over seventy-four percent of the total, compared to about seventy-three percent last year. When, when you look at the trends, the, and I think we have some following, but, um, in the statistical area also, uh, ten years ago, um, sales tax was about sixty-nine percent of the total. Property tax, ten years ago, was twenty-seven percent, twenty-seven and a quarter percent. This year, it's twenty-two and a half, so. And that's actually down from last year also, so. So, looking at the, the dollars over the ten-year period for your various revenues in the general fund, um, and this comes right out of the statistics there in the back of your CAFER, but, uh, the top line is the sales tax revenue. And you can see in that ten-year period, uh, in total, the sales tax revenue has gone up four-point-four million. That's on increased retail sales of a hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars in that ten-year period, so, very good. The bottom line is the property taxes and motor vehicle miscellaneous taxes. You can see, it's stayed just pretty constant. Actually, the ten-year average on the mil levy for the, uh, puts the mil levy at thirty-seven-point-nine-six mils. The average increase per mil, or per year, is point-one mil. So, it's a one-point-one-three mil increase in that ten-year period, so. I don't think there's very many governmental entities, tax entities, that can make that comment, so, would be commended.
Thank you.
That's really well.
Taking a look, quick look, then, at the expenditures, twenty-nineteen in the general fund is just really very similar to the prior year. The, the one that maybe saw the change was, uh, a one-percent increase in municipal court. Kristen, do you wanna? There you go.
There we go.
There you go. It's very similar to where it was ten years ago, you know, uh, if there was any variances, it was less than four percent, probably, so. But, looking at the dollar trend on the next chart... Here again, not a lot of changes. The ones to point out, maybe, are police and municipal court. You can see those increases there. In about twenty-fifteen, that's as the city started adding additional positions in those areas. And then the cemetery, park, and zoo category, um, increased in twenty-seventeen, and that's when the city took back over the pool operations. Also had in the, the parks and area at that time, and probably spread across some of the other categories also, uh, in twenty-seventeen, had a lot of the storm damage.
The employee benefits part, I'm just, that's very impressive as far as for, as large of an organization and being able to keep the employee benefits, 'cause I know we've increased benefits, but yet we'd be able to keep our costs very consistent, so that's... That's exciting.
So, in total... Total receipts, total revenues, total expenditures in the general fund over the ten-year period. You can see, been some slight increase, not significant in that ten-year period. Two of the ten years, uh, the revenues were actually a little bit less than the expenditures. That occurred in twenty-twelve, and then again in twenty-seventeen, but, um, so you used some cash reserves then, but, as you can see, they're not a significant amount, so. Then, the next graph is your federal awards. Now, this year, the city, like last year, was not subject to a single audit. The federal expenditures were less than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but we continue to, to monitor where you're at. Next year, likely, you will be back to a single audit. The graph looks a little different this year. I want you to make sure and pay attention to the, the axis. We put it on a logarithmic scale, uh, so each area is increasing by multiples of ten, because otherwise, the tiger grants that occurred in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen put it off the chart, and everybody else was, you could hardly see what was going on, so. So, we changed that up a little bit, so you could see where, uh, the trends have been. For the most part, it's a pretty consistent picture. Numbers may vary a little from year to year, but, uh, not much else. The items going into transportation include your tiger grants, um, FAA grants, so the AIP projects, and then, uh, the various IST projects the city's had over time, so. So, that's the information out of the audit. We always, uh, know that you're working on budget at this time of year, and, and try to provide you a little perspective for all the information you've been getting. you've been getting. So just doing a comparison of the other first-class cities, population's 19,450. We kind of dropped that level just to keep liberal in the mix. And then under 100,000, we have 15 cities that continue to fall into this. Now, this information comes from the League of Municipalities, so it's not, it's not audited numbers. And there's a couple areas we're going to clarify some, some things that they provide information on. But just for consistency across the board, this is what we're using. Assessed valuation in these 15 cities, liberals, the lowest, about 123 million in its assessed valuation. Lenexa was the highest. They were actually up this last year. They were up about 5.7% to 67.6 million. We're the middle of the pack. Number wise, unfortunately, not valuation wise, but 228 million for Garden City was actually up last year, 7.9 million. So that's always a positive. Dodd Cities, in between, halfway in between liberal and garden at 171 million. They were up 3.3% last year. So. Debt per capita. Now, this is one of them that we didn't, we're not real sure why the league does this, but when they include their debt reporting, they include industrial revenue bonds, which are not bonds that you're liable for. They're not on the city's books. They're, they're not city debt. So, but not having good information from the others, we've, we've gone ahead and left it in there. Liberals on the low end, Dodge and Garden more to the high. But you know, per capita, and this is debt per capita that's reflected here, if you would back out those industrial revenue bonds, because here the, the league's calculation, the city comes in at $5,623. We back out that debt that doesn't belong to the city, and just take into account your general obligation bonds and your capital leases that we looked at earlier, would put you at $3,662 for 2019. If you take it a step further and look at it from the legal interpretation on what your legal debt margin is, so that's the debt that's going to be paid through property tax levies, would actually drop you to $860 per capita. So. And that's down from 2018 when it was $930. So. So looking just at what's reported by the other entities as general obligation bonds, outstanding, and this would be their 2018 debt balances. Garden City's right there in the middle of the numbers, but fortunately, we're not the middle of the, the dollars. So we're towards the lower end. Really, everybody stayed pretty much in the same lineup until you got to the middle there. And from Emporia to Shawnee, everybody kind of shuffled around a spot or two from this year to last year, but otherwise been pretty consistent. And then the last couple graphs deal with your, your mill levies. The first one being just the city's levy, so what you guys determine and staff each year with the budget. Garden City, we're right there in the middle. For the 2019 levy was 32.235 mils compared to Dodd Cities, 45.53. So they were 13, over 13 mils higher. Liberals, the highest of 15 cities presented here. They were over 52 mils last year. So, almost 20 mils higher than Garden City. Garden City's just been pretty flat. Dodd Cities' mill levy last year came down about 1.3 mils. Liberals been pretty flat, was actually up a little bit last year. But then realizing that the city's only a portion of the mill levy that resident within the city pays, looking at the total mills levied for that, that housing unit, again, Garden City, right in line there with Manhattan, Pittsburgh, Junction City. We were just over 160 mils in total this last year. Dodd City was 23 mils higher, at about 100, a little over 183 mils. Liberal was the highest of all 15 cities, 30 mils higher than Garden City at just over 190 mils. So, so realizing that the budget process is always difficult and stuff, maybe it makes some of your decisions a little easier putting it in perspective with what the others are doing. So. So that's the highlights of, of what we had for the audit. Be happy to try and address any questions. I know I get the opportunity to, to visit with some of you one-on-one to go through things in a little more detail. But if there's anything, we can.
These graphs really help. But we really appreciate. Any questions from the commission or any comments? Excellent job on the audit, as usual, and Melinda, you and your staff.
Yes, we appreciate that.
I know it's a, it's a big deal for everyone, but it's really well done.
We get a lot of cooperation from across all the departments in the city in that process. So we can, can't do it without their assistance and input.
Oh, really well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If you have questions later, feel free to reach out to us anytime.
Sure.
Thank you.
We appreciate the work that the, that Louis Hooper and Dick does for us as well. These graphs we use quite often, I mean, for informational purposes around town, but then also when we talk to folks that are looking at our community, like, I want to know what the tax situation is, and where the tax situation is. So we'll, we'll share that. I mean, it's, it's an honest third-party assessment of where we're at. There's probably sometimes we wish we were further on the left-hand side of the graph, but I think we could also speak to, you know, especially that one graph that they used, the League against municipalities. Teresa spoke to it, where they have the industrial revenue bonds and, well, I'm sure, I mean, provided that, that's the reason that, that, that spike is there, I'd much rather have the activity going on and the industrial revenue bonds being issued and let whoever count it and whoever put it in our audit than end up, end up with a much shorter spike. So.
Really well done.
The next item, 12B, the governing body is asked to consider late application for the neighborhood revitalization program on behalf of Dr. Jay Mayne and Dr. Lance Palmer for the address at 2304 East Mary Street for a major remodel. And Carol present this item, and I know the doctors are here too and probably want to speak, speak to the issue as well. Carol?
Hello again. It's been a little bit of a tie, a break here. But yeah, the Neighborhood and Development Services Department does administer the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, which is a tax rebate program for specific areas within the city. And we have certain criteria, certain eligibility requirements. The Dr. Mayne and Palmer, Palmer's Family Dentistry are actually renovating an existing building and are planning on moving onto Mary Street, just down from where they are right now. And they had come in and talked to us about the Neighborhood Revitalization Program and wanted to look like they were going to meet all of the eligibility, eligibility requirements. They started their construction, and we do have in the program, there is a, one of the eligibility requirements is the deadline for 70-year application, which is 180 days from the date of the building permit. So we did receive the application from the applicants. It was three days late. We did receive it on June 3rd. It was due May 31st to meet that 180-day deadline. Other than that, they did meet all of the requirements, eligibility requirements for the program. But they've come here, they did submit a letter, you should have that in your packets, requesting a reconsideration. Part of it, due to the COVID-19 closures, they did have their offices closed during most of the downtime during the pandemic. They are reopened right now. I, staff did do a little bit of research on some previous cases for the late application request before the commissioners. We did find two cases in the last 10 years. One was in 2013, one was in 2017. The one in 2013 was a remodel for a multifamily building, which was approved. The one in 2017 was a new house that was denied. At this time, you have the alternative to either number one, approve this late request or deny this late request. Staff is unable to make a recommendation due to the, the succeeding the guidelines of the program. And I do want to mention the fiscal note, if alternative number one is chosen, 75% of the increase in the annual taxes, property tax, will be rebated, rebated back to the owners for the next seven years. And then if you choose option two, there is no fiscal note.
So I know Dr. Mayne and Dr. Palmer are here. Do you, would you like to say anything? Or, I mean, you don't have to, but I know that you made the trip up, which is, it's really valuable to us. And if you do, we need you to speak to the mic so everyone can hear.
In case Dr. Mayne messes up.
Appreciate you listening and considering. We, honestly, we thought we were doing everything right. And, but the bottom line is, is we did miss it by three days. So, there, whether there are good reasons or not, we just do ask that you reconsider. And we do feel that we are a valuable member of the community in what we try to provide as a service as well as, and donations or things back to the community. And we just really appreciate your reconsideration.
Any questions for, no, Carol, would this have been approved if it had been, okay?
Yeah, they did need all the other.
Yeah. So with that, I want to move that the governing body approved the proposed request to submit a late application for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program.
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out that I know probably in the past when decisions made, it's, it's made it pretty complicated for us to have these rules in place. So, once we do it for one, I appreciate you guys coming up, but there is those cases where we're going to get this again and again. So.
And, and I would say too, I think this idea of COVID, and when you close your office, you're not in your office. I think this is a unique situation, and so that's part of my consideration and why I made the motion. So.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think you're correct, that might happen. But again, I think on a case-by-case basis, I mean, that's really what we as a commission should be doing. So. Any further discussion?
No. And I look at it was three days late versus the 60-some days and the 70-some days too. So, I appreciate you getting it in three days.
Okay, if not, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve task order number three between the City of Garden City and HNTB Corporation for Enviro, for Environmental Engineering Services for the Garden City Regional Airport Terminal Project. Rochelle?
Yeah, afternoon. Nice to see everybody. I know you for that, but it really is nice to see everybody in person. So in front of you is a task order number three, as Matt indicated, for the environmental studies for the terminal. That's the first step we need to take before we get into design. This task order is roughly $5,506. The expenditures will be paid out of the airport fund at 060, 60001, 6001. And then this will be an eligible expense that we can get, request reimbursement under the CARES Act funding. So that reimbursement will go into 062, which is the airport fund for the terminal project. So it's an upfront cost to the city, but it will be reimbursed through the CARES Act. Staff recommends approving task order number three.
I make a motion, we approve task order number three between the City of Garden City and, and, or HNTB Corporation for Environmental Engineering Services for the Garden City Regional Airport Terminal Project.
So it's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
It's exciting.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve two reappointments to the Traffic Advisory Committee and appoint a new member. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Like everyone else, it's good to be here. So, thank you. To save you from me reading this, we have, we have four appointments that need to be appointed to a five-person board on the Traffic Advisory Committee. Two of those are open right now. Two will be open as of the first of next month. We have two members, Mr. Gary Bennett and Ms. Gloria Allen, who have, Gary served two terms and Gloria served three, and they would like to stay on. And so we're asking for a waiver so they can stay on. We did solicit to try to bring on members, and I was able to reach out to Jared Hoffman, and he obliged and applied. And so we would like to bring him on to finish out a term that's already open. And that term expires in July, on July 1st of 2022. So, so we have a few alternatives. One would be to, to grant the waiver for Mr. Bennett and Ms. Allen and appoint them to another three-year term that would end in July 1st of '23, and appoint Mr. Hoffman to the remainder of a three-year term that would expire on July 1st, 2022. Three, alternative three would be for the governing body to select four other candidates to fill the vacant positions or deny the request. We're asking in the recommendation for alternative one and two.
So Andy, I have a question. So how often do you meet? And I was, was going to look this up before the meeting, and I couldn't, and I didn't get a chance.
It's, it's really not a monthly consistent meeting
Okay.
because we meet when we have an item that comes forward that we need to discuss for business that then we would bring to the governing bodies. So it's, it, it could be a couple of months in a row, several months in a row, and it could go for a few months where we don't meet at all. So, we don't, we don't meet just to.
Not a consistent, talk about traffic. You might know that now, but you haven't seen each other for a while. You might want to meet and get in front. Any other questions?
Haven't seen traffic in a while.
That's right. What's traffic? Any other questions or comments? With that, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Bennett and Mrs. Allen for the three-year term beginning July 1st, 2020, and also appoint Mr. Hoffman to fill the remainder of the three-year term expiring July 1st of 2022.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thanks, Andy.
Item 12E, this is our final presentation of the city manager's proposed draft budget. And so I'll invite Melinda in to go over the remaining general fund departments, and then we'll also review general fund revenues.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I was so used to meeting by Zoom at my office, I, you know, I left my, my book there leaning against the file cabinet. So, thank you for. That's my excuse. That's my excuse, and I'm sticking.
I don't know if these are in order, because I dropped all my papers.
So you might be looking at a different budget book?
No, I just dropped the, just the, this month. So.
To go back to the June 2nd meeting, there was some adjustments made in Fund 24, 25, Fund 40, and Fund 60 due to motor vehicle estimates. We did receive those estimates. So those line items were adjusted. In Fund 40, though, we did reduce the expenditures. We had a project in there that we're not going to be doing, the Kansas Avenue project. And then the east side drainage came in a lot lower than what we had anticipated. So we're basing our new debt payments in 2021 on the east side drainage project at 1.75 million, which is roughly 219,000 over 10 years. So those are the changes that we made on the June 2nd meeting. Now, you can go to the June 16th tab. We'll be starting out with the Neighborhood and Development Services. There's 13 authorized positions in this Development Services. There's 13 authorized positions in this area. In 2020, we've had several vacancies. We were fairly successful on possibly getting a city inspector hired. That's in number 240. That line item of 150 in 2020 may need a small adjustment to get that person hired in. But in 2021, we are basing the salaries on the full authorized positions. So that gives you the salaries and benefits on 13 full-time employees. Going down the expenses in 2020 and 2021, we have engineering fees, 5275.01, 275,000 this year, 280,500 next year. That's the contract that we have currently with Wilson and Company. Training and education, you'll notice that most, in all, in all of our budgets, the training, the travel line items have been reduced significantly in 2020. A lot of conferences have been postponed, or they're either doing a live stream. On the next page, these are pretty normal expenses that we're going through here. We have new equipment office. We have lease payment for vehicles and new equipment other. And I think I'll have Carol, she's here, to discuss what she has going on. Mainly, one of the bigger items here is the comprehensive plan for 150,000 in 2020.
Yeah, I'll just go over the, the new equipment office and then the new equipment other. Those are the two asterisk items. The first one, we've got the CitizenServe software, which is our software we use to run code enforcement and our inspections. GPS, we do have GPS units on our vehicles so we can track where our inspectors are at all times. Copier printer, that's just typical for maintenance and to replace older units when needed. The next one, the other, that, the big one, of course, is the comprehensive plan for 150, which we are starting to get underway, which we're really excited about. Hopefully, we'll use up some of that this year, and then some of that we'll have to hold over some for, for next year as we postpone it back a few months. The materials testing and survey and stakes, that is for a public works inspector who does all the inspection of infrastructure improvements. So that's just supplies that he uses. And then the engineering and planning software, those are, those are kind of placeholders. We're looking to get a software system that combines actually the permitting with the engineering and planning so that we can have one, one software system instead of just all of this makeshift stuff. So.
So Carol, I have a question. So I've had the, I mean, privilege of going through all of the different proposals for the comprehensive plan, but I don't remember any of them being less than this. Will you add additional dollars in for 2021?
Well, we would have to come up with a plan if we, if we decided to do that. I, we don't have the money set aside at this time, but we would have to work with Melinda on that. There were a few that were under, but yeah. And plus, we, we can always negotiate.
Okay, yeah.
I can, I can do it.
There was also, those prices also include, I have the same observation, and thinking this may not get us to the finish line, but the, there is a piece that the downtown specific is, is an addendum to it, that, well, we had hoped that this, this amount would include that. We didn't realize what the proposals suggested until now. But I, yeah, I do think you can scope the project, the, the proposals, give some unit pricing, and maybe you can look to take away from some things. The downside is, most of the expense is in the human interaction piece. And when we've done comprehensive, our last comprehensive plan, and how we've handled projects like the pool and other things, we don't want, I mean, Carol could do a wonderful comprehensive plan sitting in her office. No, but it may not be the community's plan. It would be her plan, and it would meet the statutory requirement, but the value in this process is that human interaction. So we don't really want to take a lot of that away.
Yeah. That's true. That's true. And that's, that's one of the most important parts of a comprehensive plan, is making sure that we can get out to the community and get what they want for the future. So, you know, if, if we, if we can work out a deal that we can get in the, the downtown master plan update as well, then we will. If not, you know, we do want to make sure we get a quality comprehensive plan.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I just was, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. The totals were all over. So.
So that has totals for Neighborhood and Development Services in 2020 revised, 1,418,700, and for 2021, 1,534,400. 133 is street maintenance. This department, we have reviewed already. When we looked at special trafficway, there's been no changes. It has to be included because it is part of the general fund. Moving forward from there, we have Public Works Parks, 135. There's 13 employees in this area, along with their benefits. Going down through the expenses, the larger ones you're going to see are the tree trimming. On the next page is, some of the larger ones would be, you know, just your trees, shrubs, and seed. But I think I'll have Andy come up and talk about the capital outlay, outlay areas, the different sections in there.
Sure.
Thank you, Andy.
On the, well, what I have is the third page, look at the new equipment parks, just a few things. Is articulated skid loader buyback program that we do every year. So you see that in there. We're on schedule for a pickup this year. We received our bucket truck a couple months ago. We're in the, the second payment of that. It was about a year before we got it, once we ordered it, but it's up and running. And, and the operator is very happy. So. And then we have a dump truck on schedule for 2021. And we're going to, we're going to go to a 550 rather than the smaller truck that we've used. It's, it'll allow us to haul more dirt, more, get, get snow removal out of there with larger loads, different things like that. Just a, just a stronger vehicle for us to be able to use. And then a larger mower, 104-inch mower, we're looking at down the road. Just, I have some 22 stuff on here, but we're not reviewing that today. But you can see in that line item, we've put that out there.
So are these available on the rent-a-truck program?
The street actually has a larger, they're, they're larger for that. The street does those, not the parks. So.
I'd make sure some commissioners have driver's licenses.
Well, and then also, we're still, we're still trying to move forward with smart irrigation controllers. We've taken that out this year. We did that at the budget process last year to try to help make some budget numbers we were looking for, and we picked it back up in 2021. And we have playground in there for, for Dean Wiley. I actually have money set aside in a different account, the, the 030 account, the liquor tax account, that is in, is this year. And so we kind of have that positioned in two places, just to see how, how that project comes about. So, that's, that's really what I have. Been in Grimsley Tennis Court, we're doing right now.
So Andy, on, on the Southeast Community Park, so, next year, it will just be like the grass? And, and are they putting the sidewalk in? And then we'll have to think about?
Okay, so yeah, I can give you an update on what's going on there. Currently, we're putting the drainage system in, and the water system.
Okay.
And parking lot. We're getting ready to go to bid, I think in July. I'd have to look at the schedule and everything, but I believe in July, we're going to bid for the dirt work and also the trail. And not long after that, a little bit later this fall, we're going to start working on the irrigation system. And so next spring or into summer, probably, probably June-ish, we'll see as long as everything goes.
And I know you had planned for equipment, but that's what, two years down the line? Or is that something?
We don't have, we don't have the equipment funded right now. We do have, have plans for that, but we'll start looking at that as we move forward on the equipment.
Thank you.
So for parks, the total 2020 revised budget is 1,182,700, and for 2021, 1,260. Thanks, Andy. 136 is the big pool. For 2020, we have revised it down substantially in the operation expenses. We do have a little bit of seasonal, temporary seasonal salaries in there. To keep this budget intact, so that it doesn't fluctuate year to year, we did, in capital outlay, plug in a number of 481,250 for aquatic facility to get the total budget to be a half a million in 2020. And then going back to normal operating expenses in 2021, showing 454,950. Now we're to the zoo. There's three different divisions here. So we have zoo administrative. There's seven full-time positions in this area, along with their benefits. We've got a lot of maintenance contracts that go on with zoo in the Fennup Center. We've got 41,000 this year, 41,500 next year. And then the utilities that go along with the Fennup Center. We pay for education expenses out of this area. On the next page is the new equipment office. You're only going to see 5,500 this year, 55 next year. And that's basically for computers and office furniture. Kristi, I think you, you sent me an email that the accreditation is going to be moved from 2021 to 2022. So we do have a little bit of savings that we can capture here in 2021. So when we go in to do some revised expenses, we'll take a look at those. In the maintenance division, we've got six full-time employees here, along with their benefits. You're going to see a lot of repair for buildings, equipment, grounds, vehicles, all those types of expenses that go along with maintenance. Down in the capital outlay area, on the next page, you'll see the detail in the capital outlay. They, they got a new ATV to replace the mini truck this year. That was 15,000. Next year, they're looking at portable sawmill of 6,800, and then bear, boardwalk, top rails and posts, 8,500. After we get done with the animal division, I'll have to come up.
Is that replacing all of that? Is that, are they in the current exhibit? Because I know it's been aging, so.
In the animal division, 144, we have 17 full-time employees here, along with their benefits. We do contract with a veterinarian, 523713, 43,750 both years. And I'm sure that I've, if anybody's seen the animal hospital, I bet the veterinarian is going to love his job. Repair buildings is also in this area. One of the larger items in here is animal feed, 120,750 this year, 120 next year. Under new equipment, in 2021, one of the larger items is to replace a 99 Expedition for transporting animals to the vet hospital that we have or in and out of town. So we haven't replaced that vehicle for a long, long time. They have 37,000 budgeted in there for that. Would you like to talk about the rest of the items in animal division, Kristi? Or any other ones?
I can chat with you about any items you would like. So yeah, the 99 Expedition is actually a hand-me-down we received a number of years ago from another division. And I've got the mileage on it somewhere here. But yeah, we use it for vet rounds. So when we take medical equipment out in the zoo, it's secure in the SUV. So if we don't go and take everything with us to, from the car to the site, we don't have to leave somebody behind to watch over the medications and the scalpels and everything else, just in case somebody decides to play in the open bed of a truck, if that's what we were using, which is what we used to use in the past. Other items for, for new equipment in animal care, replacing some capture nets. Those get used and worn out over time. A sand blaster, which we've talked about checking with other departments to see if we can borrow theirs when we need it, instead of buying a new one. We have rust issues. We have solidified rhino urine issues that other departments don't have the fun of, but.
That's probably unique to you.
And then there are, there are improvements like the rainforest mesh where the geldings monkeys are. It's a older, heavier gauge mesh. We could go with a lighter one that's much easier to sit for. It's a little more enjoyable for our guests. Other improvements, such as working in the bear exhibit yard a little better to protect the trees in a more visually pleasing manner. So that's a general consensus on, on those, or impression of those. If you have any specific questions, like the boardwalk, were you wanting to ask about that?
So I'm sorry. So is that, that's your, just replacing, is that a repair? Because I know there, there, it's been, I mean, it's been there a long time. I was.
Yeah. It's replacing enough that we don't have to, I don't know specifically if we're taking the whole thing out and replacing all of it, or sections. But it's, it's getting it done to where it's safe.
The boardwalk is a really cool feature, so it's really nice.
And that gets us through all of the zoo department. In 2020, the revised budget is 2,303,480. And for 2021, proposed is at 2,397,800. Thank you, Kristi. Next is the fire department. We have four divisions in this area. Fire administrative is 151. There's two employees in this area, along with their benefits. We have some maintenance contracts that are budgeted for in here. Repair buildings. This year, it's going to be replacement of some garage door openers at Labrador Station. New equipment office, that's just basic office computers and, and office furniture. And 152, fire operations, there's 35 proposed full-time positions in this area. The chief is going to talk to you in a little bit. There's one position that's added in this area that he would like to discuss the importance of that. The operating expenses in the operations area, of course, have the association dues, physical exams. This all has to do with the firefighters' training, uniform, gas, oil, diesel. And new equipment other, would you like to talk about those too?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
So under new equipment other, biggest focus is maintaining our equipment, making sure that we have up-to-date equipment, modern equipment for the safety of our firefighters. And by virtue of our firefighter's safety, that makes things better for the public. So we're definitely in a mode of making sure that we stay up to date with that. Some of our items include, get to the right page here. Actually, several of the items we have are fire helmets, face pieces, some of our personal protective equipment. It's things that we have to maintain. If we hire new personnel, we have to make sure that we have helmets for them, face pieces. We also have to make sure that we have extra equipment on hand when things break and go unserviceable, that, that we are able to keep people equipped and ready to go to work. The handheld radios is in a, it's a, actually about a five-year process to get all the department's radios updated to current standards. This keeps us in line with state guidelines for the radio system for the emergency services throughout the state. So this is a, a joint effort with the police department, which actually, by ordering so many radios for the two agencies, we've both able, been able to pick up more radios than what we were trying for by virtue of savings. So, it's, it's a good program to do with, working with each other. Most of the rest of the items here for new equipment other are small tools and equipment, chains for keeping our chainsaws up and running, things like that. We are looking at adding exhaust system for diesel exhaust up at the Labrador Station. This is a big safety issue, a modern safety issue with cancer prevention in the fire service, of making sure that we get the diesel exhaust out of the building and away from the, the living quarters of the firefighters. So, we're wanting to install one of those systems up there. Right now, there is nothing. Right now, there is nothing other than the doors go up and the wind blows, which right now, that's a lot. That is what we have to rely on at the current time. So that's kind of a high priority for us is that safety issue. And then we have a fairly high-dollar item of our self-contained breathing apparatus. We are still using some older generation tanks. We're trying to start upgrading when we get a new apparatus, which I think that's the next section, Melinda. It will come with newer style SCBA's. So our goal is to, as we start standardized across the department. These also have integrated pass devices, which is a personal alert system. It's how we notified or get notified if somebody goes down inside of any kind of an incident. Right now, they are separate standalone and manual items. These are automatic, they're integrated. So it's kind of a big thing safety-wise for us to have that in the budget. That's it for that section, Melinda.
And then in new equipment vehicle, there is a E617 apparatus and equipment that you're proposing, total cost of roughly 775,000. We're looking at that as a 10-year lease purchase. If you'd like to talk about the import of that.
Yeah, 617 is, what year, 19? Yeah, it's a 1990 apparatus. It's one of our oldest ones. It's still got an open cab on it. What we will do is retire that. We will replace the state of the engine at the station at Labrador, and then that apparatus will come down here and be one of our main spares or backups. It's part of the regular fleet maintenance rotation program that Chief Collins has put together and has been maintaining. So it's a step in that.
And while we're talking about the operations, would you like to talk about the personnel?
Yeah, and then there's the additional person. It's a position that has not been included or funded for some time. We are asking to bring that position back. And do that, what it will do is it will get all three of our shifts equal number of personnel, and it will, for today's date, it will fill us out. It will bring us to complete full staff. That helps with daily staffing issues. It helps keep overtime costs down as we don't have to call people back as much if we have that extra person, and that's why we've included that request for next year.
And Chief, you might review for a shift. Station one would have how many, not counting the fire marshal, not counting you, not counting the administrative assistant. You can count or not count the battalion chief, but just let us know how you're counting. The, what would the staffing for station one be? What would the staffing for station two be?
Our minimum on duty every day is eight. That does not count the battalion chief or the shift leader. That is split up a minimum of five down here and three up at the north station. Goal since I've been here is instead of operating daily two apparatus, one at each station, I've been pushing for a second one here. So we have two engines and a ladder truck as much as we possibly can, staying within our budget, staffed on a daily basis, which gives us more capabilities, standardizes our response to incidents, and that's the number we have.
Let me outside a different way. Station one, shift A, how many people, not minimum staffing, how many people are assigned?
Oh, assigned to the shift itself?
Yes.
Are we in?
Six.
Six, yeah, there's six.
And then at station two, on A?
Four.
And for B?
Five and four.
And for C?
Six and four.
Okay. So the requested position, and I would, my history is that it's not, was it, was there was a budget request at one point in time for three additional positions and two additional positions were approved by the commission as part of a budget a long time ago, the third one wasn't. So I do think in maybe the eyes of some that that was a frozen position. That wasn't a frozen position, that was a position that was requested and never authorized. So in operations, the actual number of authorized driver engineer, which includes, that's really firefighters, lieutenants, battalion chiefs, is 33 currently. The request is to move that to 34, which would provide balance in full staffing, it would fully assign, it would provide an equal number of people assigned to each station, each shift for right now. That's my regulation, so.
Any questions in operations? Moving on, we do have volunteers, 153. Total budget here is 8,430 and 8,250 for 2021. And we like to separate out the operations at the airport with one of the firefighters. So we have one person budgeted in this area for the ARF station along with the benefits and then the expenses that go along with the equipment that is out at the airport.
Just to help you on the math, in case you need to get there in the whole firefighter thing over here. So there's 30, right? Six plus, I mean, if you could get to, if the position that's requested, included in the proposed draft, has you at the 64 level across the board, that would be 30. And then you have three battalion chiefs, that gets you to 33. So we've got a total number of 35. Help me out, Chief. If I add, if I add the one that's in ARF to the 34 that are in the proposed budget, that, and I subtract three battalion chiefs, that gets me to 32. But if I count full staffing as six and four across three shifts, I only get to 30.
Correct.
Who are the two I'm missing?
Cynthia, Gina, myself.
Nope. Jean's a fire, Jean's listed under fire marshal, and you and Cynthia are in 151.
You're correct with your 30, and then the three battalion chiefs is 33.
Mm-hmm. One of them we account for over here in the ARF budget.
But it's not, it's still a regular, it's one of the 10 on each shift, or the hoped 410 on each shift.
Well, we'll go through this.
We'll work on that.
Yeah, there's a discrepancy here. We'll figure that out.
We're going to have some other adjustments that we're going to be talking about, so that'll be one of them that will come to you later. So currently, as of right now, the fire department budget 2021, 2020 is 3,593,550. 2021 is 3,877,250.
No, Chief, did you, did you want to say something else, or did you? Okay.
No, sir, I was just standing here trying to count without taking my shoes off.
No.
But I can do it.
We appreciate that.
We can hold up fingers.
I think the money, I think the money part's right. I think the representation of the authorized positions is off.
Okay.
And we'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then cemetery, 161. We have seven full-time employees here along with their benefits. This is just maintenance, this is maintenance of two cemeteries that we have here in Garden City, the expenses that are there. Going to the next page, basically where all the dollars are is in cemetery improvement. And I'll have Andy come up and talk about the items that he has listed here.
Okay, so on the cemetery improvement, we have proposal for expansion in '21 and '22. And I kind of wanted to lay out where we are with Valley View Cemetery. And so I pulled up the latest space availability sheet that we have. And we haven't opened M up yet, and there's 950 spaces in M. L has 95 left, and J has about 54. That's the southeast. So L and M are the two far to the west, just north of the mausoleum and the columbarium.
M was what? How many was M again?
M has 950.
950?
And so we average somewhere between 160, 170 burials, and a few of those are already purchased spaces. But if we use the 160 number, what we have available at Valley View will get us about six and a half years. But we're very limited to what we can offer people as to those three places. That said, Sunset's a different story. We have six to seven burials a year, maybe eight or 10 on a heavy year at Sunset. And if I can pull the numbers up here, there's about 20 shy of 3,200 spaces available out there.
Wow.
And so it's something to think about as we walk through this. But we just don't have, we don't have people that elect to be buried at Sunset. And so we can talk about some things and maybe get creative to try to encourage.
So Sunset doesn't allow you to put any type of headstone?
Everything's flat.
Right.
Yeah. Everything's flat out there.
And there's a marker. I mean, you could have a marker, it just can't be a monument.
But there isn't, there aren't trees, or I mean, it's-
Not really. We irrigate with a hose reel. So you can, you can get about every eight days, if you go every day, pull it out there and pull it in, and it reels itself in. So to get trees out there, we have some on the perimeter, but not a lot. So you can't, you can't put many trees out there unless you say, hey, we're going to pull these spaces out and do it, because they're stacked out there tight.
So is, are the burial spots from both of the same cost, or is one in what less expense?
Yes, currently, they're both, they're both the same price.
At the 3,200, is that currently the space that we're in right now?
That's available at Sunset.
Wow.
Yeah. That's the number as of, I think this is a May report, or this is an April report, so. But-
Do you have the numbers on actual casket burials versus crematory?
I don't have that worked out. We're seeing a slight uptick. We're not getting a lot. And I think we'll start to see that more as time goes, just the difference in expense. And that was one other thing I was going to talk about. On the proposed expansion to the north of L and M that I'm looking at, would bring us about a little over 2,000 extra spaces, which would give us another, on the numbers that we're looking at now, if it's consistent for full spaces, that would give us another 12, roughly 12 years on top of that, if everything's consistent. So the expansion would give us another 20 years from now before we would have to start.
You're talking about this $200,000 expansion?
It's actually 300 over, after you build the roads and then put the irrigation system in the next year. So, and that would run off the well up there. So that's really the big thing that I wanted to put in your ballpark to get you to start thinking about, so. And we can get creative in looking at how do we motivate to go to Sunset, those kind of things. So there's a lot of space out there.
Are you done with the sidewalks?
The sidewalk is finished, yes.
Okay, it looks very nice.
Sidewalk's finished.
What about the repair of the streets? I know you've done some. Are they all repaired, or?
No, they're, well, from the irrigation system, and when they cut across the street, those are patched.
Okay.
We need to do some pothole repairing, and then we're going to crack seal this winter, and then chip seal again, or again, chip seal next summer. Well, that'll, that'll help.
There, there is some really rough-
There, there, most of those roads are two to three inches thick. They're chip sealed over and over, over the years, and just not constructed that well. So that's really all I have, if you have any other questions.
So that has the cemetery budget in 2020 at 490,000. And then in 2021, with the capital improvements, it's at 736,950. That has a $200,000 expansion cost in there, so. And 171, capital improvement, this is kind of a catch-all of a lot of different things. Fireworks are paid for out of here. The Main Street program, I've got an error in 2021. It should, instead of 82.5, the request is 86,000. If you approve that, we'll get that moved to that number. We budget for development incentives in here, 50,000 this year, 100,000 next year. Economic development is an amount that's equal to one mil for the city. In 2020, that was 211,496. We pay Fannie County Economic Development their invoice out of this amount, and then the balance goes to Fannie County for the joint account that we have over there for economic development. We're hoping that the mil levy will be right around 220 for 2021. Airport Industrial Park, we have 10,000 both years there. That basically pays property taxes and some repair to roads. Golf course building and grounds, it's a transfer to the golf course both years at 375,000. Facilities maintenance, we have 50,000 in there this year and 50,000 next year. There's going to be some remodeling done downstairs in the Neighborhood and Development Services. They've got some carryover money in the '05 fund that they can use to get started this year, and then this 50,000 that we have in 2021. Hopefully, we'll finish that out. The Star Bond, once we hit our base with the Star Bond, the state still sends us the money. We're going to be recording that in a separate revenue line item, but then we have to then send it to our Commerce Trust account. So this is just a WASH, this 360. You'll see a revenue line item for the same amount. In miscellaneous, this has a lot of different expenses in it. It's got your municipal band, it's got some United Way promotions that we do with the employees. Then in social funding, 45.5 is what we have for 2020. 82.5 is three eighths of one mil that we kind of had our hearts set on doing, but that's always a number that's negotiable with whatever you would like to put in that line item. So that's something that we can talk about later. But that takes us through all of the expenses in the general fund. As you can see down below, we have 26,306,126 for 2020 revised. The expenses in 2021 are 28,340. We're proposing that we budget a cash carryover of 3.3 million to bring the expenses to 31, You also have the request from Downtown Vision attached here. This summary report that's in your notebook, it's a quick, easy way to look at 2018 actual, 2019 actual, see where we're at for our revised 2020, and kind of see where you like, where you would like to see those departments land on their total expenses. So that's something that you can take with you to study when we're trying to make some adjustments.
I might mention to you on that, on that sheet, that the percentage is actually the percentage of the general fund that that subcategory is. So it is, a lot of times when a board would look at a budget, you're looking at a percentage increase over the previous year. Don't look at that percentage and think that that's a relationship between 2020 and 2021. It's representing what percentage of our overall general fund is being appropriated towards, you know, the city manager's office or information technologies.
And the last thing that we can look at now is the revenues. As you noticed in the audit, they were talking about the unencumbered cash had a growth in it. To start 2020, we had 7,588,848 that we started out with. Then the various revenues going down through here, connecting links comes in from the state. Consumer use tax, that's kind of like a sales tax. That's when you buy something out of town and get it shipped to Garden City. That's a use tax that comes into the city. Liquor consumption tax, 135,000 this year, 137,700 next year. That's one-third of the total liquor tax that we receive. Two other funds also receive that amount. Ad valorem tax- also receive that amount. Ad valorem tax, if you look at the 2020 budget, it's at four million, oh-fifty-two, seven-eighty. We are anticipating a delinquency this year in 2020, so we're taking it down to three-point-nine. I did receive that distribution, and I can tell you that that three-point-nine is pretty much on target. Ad valorem back tax, that's taxes that are paid from a previous year that are coming in. That is fairly high this year, so that's why it went from thirty-five to eighty-five. City sales tax, in 2019 actual, you're at six million, eight-forty-nine. We're budgeting for 2020 revised, six million, two-forty-four, eight-eighteen. But the very next line has the Star Bond sales. So if you add those two together, you're not down too much from previous year actual. County sales tax, we're also at three-point-seven-two-five this year, three-point-seven-six-two next year. Motor vehicle taxes, those have been adjusted to the actuals for 2020 revised and 2020, 2021 approved. So those are solid numbers there. We do receive franchise payments from cable TV, gas utility, and telephone, and then telecom. This is where we also record our cemetery spaces, fifty thousand this year, fifty-one next year. Some other larger items here are rural fire contracts, thirty-three-oh-one, twelve, a hundred-and-seventy this year, one-eighty-three next year. Fines, municipal courts, we budgeted for 2020, nine, nine-hundred-thousand. We're taking that down to seven-eighty, and that still may be a little high.
So I have a question. So we provide fire service to Holcomb, or do they have their own fire department? I can't remember.
We provide to all outside townships, outside of Garden City.
Okay, so this is where, this is where that income, part of that comes from?
Yes. Along with municipal court fines, there's a lot of fees for state judge, law enforcement, reinstatement. Those all get collected by the city and then sent into the state through the municipal court budget. We, for the big pool, we're showing no revenue this year, and then we're showing revenue in 2021. We issue licenses through Neighborhood and Development Services. You can see all those listings there. And then you can also go down into permits. The larger one there is permits for buildings, two-hundred-and-forty this year, two-seventy next year. Interest income, we did really well in 2019 when the interest rates were really good. But we are taking that down to about half. We did have some CDs that were in place that had a high interest rate. Those are coming due, and the renewal rates are not anywhere near what they were. On the next page, you're gonna see reimbursed police services, three-four-seven-oh, point-oh-four. That is for the SRO in the, at the school district, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand this year, two-eighty-five, six-hundred next year. We talked about franchise fees earlier today, three-four-seven-oh, point-oh-seven. This is your utility funds reimbursement. It includes your five percent franchise fee on revenues of the electric fund, the water fund, and the solid waste fund. It also includes a six percent salary amount that's attributable to Service and Finance and City Manager's Office. So those two items added together for the general fund is four-point-six million for 2021, and four-point-six-two-six for 2021. Sorry, that first number was for 2020. Reimbursement from the county, that is for Neighborhood and Development Services. Reimbursement from Holcomb is for the same thing. The county also reimburses the city for the animal shelter costs, their percentage that we pay to Fannie County Humane Society. We have a new one with the reimbursed county attorney. That's the county share of the shared position. And then just some miscellaneous items. We do have a transfer from capital improvement coming in in 2020 of two-fifty-seven, nine-sixteen. That was budgeted last year. That was a use tax amount that we received several years before, and we didn't know what it was.
Yeah, that's right.
So that brings, if you go back to the first page, the balancing number in all of this is your ad valorem tax, and that's three-oh-four-oh and three-oh-four-one. Currently, right now, we're looking at five-point-four million with the numbers that you looked at and expenses. And that is, we have not received our city valuation as of yet. I've been checking on that. We were hoping that that would come in today, but, yesterday, but hasn't.
Yeah, so the, so that gap is, you know, one point, one-point-four million. The, you know, if the valuation would come in at up three percent, that gets, that knocks a hundred thousand off of that. The, that, that leaves a big number. It's not necessarily out of line for where we are at this stage of the budgetary process. But you might give some thought to some things that you've seen in the taxing funds. In the taxing funds, it's the only ones that'll make a difference on the mill. You make changes in the other parts of the budget, too, but if the goal is to change this number, the other ones won't do anything. But we've, we've identified a slate of, of some things that we think at our July seventh meeting, we will, we will frame in a, in a budget memo that sort of gives you a slate of some options and the impact that that would have in, in, in sort of attacking this number. At that meeting, it would be helpful to have some consensus opinion on kind of what we're shooting at. You know, the, what, what is the target? If the target is, is a level ad valorem tax level to 2020, then, then that would, that would be good to know. If it's, well, maybe not level, but, you know, up a half mil, up a mil, something like that. And you're not making your budget decision there. It just helps us come up with a package of solutions. And again, based on the, based on the slate of maybe projects or line item reductions and those types of things that we give you, you'll give us a read of, yeah, I like that idea, no, I don't like that particular idea. We can kinda get a sense of about what that new number will be. And if that's seven-hundred-thousand up, and you're looking at us and saying, no, I'm still not willing to end up with a budget that's seven-hundred-thousand up, then we've gotta, we've gotta go back and try to find, find some other things. So we've been through, the department heads have been great with getting back with additional ideas. They've even beat down their own budgets before we even started in on them. So I think we've got a good first draft of a proposed budget. I'm hoping that by July seventh, we will have one that's closer to realistic.
So, Melinda, you said, once you get those figures, that will impact it how? I'm sorry, that will, the ad valorem tax, that's where you'll really be able to plug in actual numbers?
Uh huh, exactly. And then we'll be able to do the calculation on the tax limit?
I see.
Because I'm probably thinking that you don't want to go to an election.
Right.
Yeah, that would be nice, too.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That number was supposed to be in yesterday?
And that comes from the county or from the state, or?
From the county.
Okay.
Well, when you find out, will you let us know?
I sure can. Would you like me to just email that to you?
That would be nice. Yeah, that would be very...
That'll give us a little better idea of what we're looking at.
Right. Keep in mind that we're basing it, these numbers on two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand per mil.
Which is, which was last year, or, no, last year was two-hundred-and-eleven?
Last year was two-hundred-and-eleven. Look, slightly over two-eleven. Anything else you want to bring up? Can I answer any other questions that we haven't discussed?
Yeah, and if there are, if there are any ideas of, you know, not just necessarily things that were in the line item, but hey, if we consider doing, you know, such and such, feel free to send those to us. We'll try to have, we've got an extra week in between this meeting and the July seventh meeting, so that actually is gonna come in really handy for the purposes of getting ready for that, the, really the working session for you. The hard work is, is at the next meeting. So if you've got some of those ideas, and we can get started on that, send them our way.
Can I just ask one question about, so in temporary employees, do they receive the benefits, or they are just, are they a contractor? How's that work with temporary employees?
Temporary employees, there's no health insurance. We do have to pay Social Security. I mean, it's just like a W-2 type of thing. We have to watch their hours on papers. So...
Okay. Is it thirty-two that they have to, if they go over thirty-two, then they become eligible for papers?
A thousand hours.
Thousand hours in a year.
Okay.
Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your help.
Yeah. Good job on the budget.
Thank you.
Or on the audit report as well.
Right. No action anticipated after the executive session, so I think if you're ready to consider the consent agenda, it would be items G one through four.
I move that we approve consent items, number G one through four.
So I can't... So it's been moved and segmented to approve the consent agenda, item G one through G four. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass this five to zero.
That concludes the business. Mayor, if you wanna do the commissioner reports?
Commissioner Dick, you get the opportunity to go first, hope that's all back together.
Well, I was gonna say, let me be the first one to say, I'm glad to see everybody back together. Now, I'll be quick. Just remember, if you haven't done the census yet, it's a big deal. It's worth about, every household is worth about sixty thousand dollars to our county in reimbursement. So it, it does make a difference if you get those. So, besides that, this has been a long meeting, so I'll pass it on.
Okay.
Again, congratulations to Melinda and the staff on not only the budget, but the audit report. It's always good to see how that's all put together, and it's really amazing on, you know, there is a few, and they always have to find minor deficiencies, but it's, it's great how they're always minor, and it's good to see that we're always moving forward. And I like the statistics. That's the best part of the whole thing. The debt per capita ratio was, I even pointed it out when I was speaking with them about, because last year, it was, we were down on the left side of the chart. This year was on the upper end, and it was just because they added all of the industrial bonds and everything. So, but like you said earlier, it's good that we have that and that we're moving forward on, on that. But it does skew, it, it does look like it's skewed, though, where we're on the higher end. But overall, really good. Again, census is vitally important. I know that, I think I saw a number, it was sixty-four percent of the state had the census replied. I couldn't find a number for Fannie County, but remember to fill that out, because that is vitally important for, for Garden City and Fannie County. And that's all I have. Glad to be back.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to stress, too, the census as well. I know that it's kind of been set aside through all of this, and we'd just like to put it back up in front. So we got something to look forward to. And also just like to thank everyone for being courteous. I know, like, there's still mask-wearing and things going on, and it's, it's great to see that. It's just kind of restrictions on the six-foot guidance and things. And there are some businesses, small businesses, opening up and taking those precautions. So kudos to those businesses for taking that stretch. Also, just like to thank all the new appointed committee members and staff members and all of those who are coming aboard. I hope that their transition and things go smoothly, and, and just, we're glad to see that those people are stepping up to take those positions. So again, thanks for all those, for the audits and reports and things from the city staff, and decisions on making some big changes. That's tough to go, you know, it's tough to make the decisions at this time, but appreciate all of those, and keeping an open mind and being able to get through those. So, that's all.
Well, yes, I'm also glad we're all together. And, and yes, please fill out your census. I think there's a theme going on here, but it is true. I mean, you know, being able to fill that out and, and reaching into those different communities where maybe they're unsure as to the validity of the census, to make sure that we can just underscore that with all of the organizations and agencies that work with those different populations, to make sure that everybody in Fannie County is counted. Yeah, the, the audit's always impressive. I mean, it's, it's a huge document to look through, and I look forward to visiting with them one-on-one. But at the same time, it, it certainly does put into perspective just where we are, not just here in Garden City, but then also as a state. And, and I think it's always nice to see that and be reminded of that as well. And on the committee members, all I wanted to talk about was just making sure that, you know, that civic engagement that we saw during the stay-at-home orders, where when you were looking at the county commission meetings and the city commission meetings, and you saw those numbers and the hundreds sometimes. I mean, I would challenge some of those people to get involved and, and come out and, and be a part of some of those advisory committees, because that really is a good way to get to know what your city is like and get to, you know, be involved and engaged and, and be part of the decision-making, too. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So I, this has been, yeah, it is, it's really nice to see you. I, I mean, I'll just admit it just upfront, so I miss all of you. I also want to talk about, I had the opportunity to do a Zoom meeting with the resident and also the, the police department, Chief Utes and several of his, several of the lieutenants and captains. And it was very informative. I wrote a letter, I know it was included in your packet, just to say thank you. I think the information, the knowledge and information I gained was phenomenal, and I think some of the opportunities that the chief talked about, to be able to get to know our police department better, and really what's, you talked about being actively involved. But the Police Citizens Academy, of course, there are right along, I don't think yet, right along opportunities. But, you know, everything that they have that is available, they're very transparent on their, on their website. So it was an incredible meeting. I learned a lot. Hopefully, we as a, as a, as a commissioner wanted to pass along that learn, so that you knew also on that. So I did get a chance to go out to the Utility Service Center. I'll admit, when I was, when I did my Citizens Academy, it's the one, I missed that one. And so it was always one I wanted to kind of check my, check mark the box. I was, it's incredible. I got to go to the Jameson Energy Center. If you've not been there, these are ginormous. And then each one of them had their own control boxes, which was really neat. And the number of men and women who work there, and then the incredible job that they do, I, it was amazing. They have one room where if electricity goes off at this, I mean, alarm and everything. Now, fortunately, nothing happened when I was there. So, because that's, that's not, that's not good. I mean, I guess there's, it's a, it's a more than a fire drill. So I also want to say thank you for the summary that I know that Louis Super and Dick presented. That, I always appreciate that, and also the opportunity that they provide to visit with him. So with that, thank you so much for today. It was an excellent meeting. I know there's a lot of things that we're gonna be doing, and so we'll go ahead and we will call for, well, in the regular meeting, and is that right, Matt, that we do the...
No, not yet. We still have, we still have the executive session, but we'll, after the, after the motion to go into executive session, we would have the Channel Eight shut down, because we don't anticipate business afterwards. So if you're, if you're willing, item twelve-F would be the governing body's consideration of an executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one pertaining to personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations, because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And this will be specifically for the purpose of evaluating the city manager, and I will, I would be included in the executive session with you.
Do you want to make that motion? How long?
I'm sorry, thirty minutes. I'm sorry, uh, thirty minutes.
Are you taking a break?
Yeah, it would be nice to take a, um, come back here at three forty and then spend thirty minutes, so.
How long of a break?
Um, well, till three forty, so.
Ten minutes.
Depends how long, yeah, depends on how long the motion is and so that might kind of overwhelm it enough, but.
You want me to make the motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, would you please make the motion?
I make the motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one pertaining to the personal matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Cause if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed for the purpose of, um, evaluating the city manager for thirty minutes and having Matt Allen in the executive session.
So do we have a second?
I'll second.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. So it's like, no one can read us past this or what?
See you back in here in about seven minutes.
I won't be here, but if, if you need me, Celine can find me. I'll be in my office.
Oh, okay. By Zoom or?
For some reason you need to talk to me.